Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 11th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just one quick announcement. The group from Underhill Farm will not be here tonight. We will be having a discussion amongst ourselves. It's going to be in the work session portion of the meeting. So there will be no input from the public. It's just an internal discussion. That being said, we'll go to correspondence. Anybody have any issues?
No.
Anything from board? No?
Nope.
John?
Nothing here.
All right, we'll move on to the meeting minutes of June 27th, 2022. Any corrections, concerns, comments?
None here.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to go into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the docket, we have Lakeview Estates, Lot 6. This is a decision statement. Location is 1102 Gambelli Drive.
I just have a question for the town attorney. Last time we talked briefly, you mentioned something about hardship being present on this site. I was wondering if you could elaborate that, you know, what these... Your perception of the hardship is for the applicant here?
I think the hardship is locating the house on the site. The house that they've spent a lot of money designing on the site that would impinge the rock outcropping and the wetland buffer. It's a difficult site, is what I'm saying, a little bit differently.
So I know in zoning law and so forth, the hardship sometimes is imposed upon an applicant, and sometimes a person comes in knowing full well what the site conditions are. And I was wondering if this meets that criteria?
Well, it's hard to say. They didn't make a presentation geared towards that, but they did, I think, offer some good rationale for why they cited the house where they did and what steps they took to minimize the impact. And I think when, you know, the staff pulled the prior approvals on the subdivision, it did show a pattern that the board worked with applicants to try to get something that was approvable and that had minimal impact on the original intent of the subdivision. And I felt what this applicant was asking for was consistent with that.
Okay, thank you.
John, any Collins concerns?
No.
Heard from Jim. Dan, you're in the back. Any issues with this one? Any comments, concerns from the board?
None.
Aaron, you good?
No, I'm probably going to vote no on this one.
Okay. All right, so first we have to... Do I have a motion to declare the board lead agency?
Motion. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a motion to accept the NEGDEC.
Motion. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
And then, in reference to the resolution approving a site plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and tree permit for loxists within the Lakeview Estates subdivision. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
One opposed. You got that, Nancy? Okay. Okay, next we're going to move on to Boniello Equity Subdivision. This is a decision statement. Location's 2016 Crom Pound Road. How are you?
Good.
Over there.
Oh, you got to go to...
Jared Boniello, Boniello Equities.
Yep. How are you tonight?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Want to get a decision statement on this?
Yeah, let me just go through it. Hang on a second. John, any issues on your end?
Not at this time, no.
Dan? Have you seen the town engineer's memo?
Yeah, we read through it.
Any issues?
No, we're going to conform to the memo.
Jim?
No issues from me.
Anything from board? Comments, concerns, questions?
None here.
As long as the memo's incorporated or by, you know, reference, then for fun.
Okay, so first, excuse me, do I have a motion to have the board act as the lead agency?
Motion. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a NEGDEC in front of us. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a resolution approving the subdivision plan and stormwater pollution prevention plan, permit for the Boniello subdivision, as noted in... And we're going to include the town engineer's comments, concerns.
Is that in the memo?
It is.
Probably cite the date of the memo.
It could take me a minute to find. Is it in here, Robin, or no?
That was today's memo.
Dan, is it dated today?
Yes.
Let it... So the memo is dated July 11th, 2022, from Dan Ciarcia, Town of Yorktown Town Engineer. We'll include that in the resolution. John, any problems?
That's great.
Okay, then do I have a motion approving the resolution?
Motion. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. Good luck. Good luck to you. Again, your other houses are beautiful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do we put Joe on to the last item so he has to stand here? Sorry, Joe. Next item in the regular session is the Colangelo Major Subdivision. This is a request for a first 90-day time extension. Location's 1805 Jacob Road.
Evening. Joseph Rehn, the Principal Site Design Consultant. Everything is in... Ready to go on this. We're just waiting on finalization, approval of all the legal instruments. Other than that, we're ready to go to finalize this. So once that's done, we'll be able to get the map filed and signed and filed.
All right. John, any issues on your end?
No issues.
Counselor?
Nothing from me.
Dan? You don't want to give them a hard time just for fun? Any issues from the board?
None.
All right, do I have a motion to request the first 90-day time extension for the Colangelo Major Subdivision?
Motion.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe. See you later. That's it for the regular session. All right, next we're going to move into the work session. The only item on the agenda is the Underhill Farm. This is for a discussion. Location is 370 Underhill Avenue. I don't think there's anybody that doesn't know about this project at this point. We did have our public informational hearing. I think we got certainly what I would call an earful from residents and concerned people. So we wanted to... We actually added this meeting to have a discussion about it. The applicant couldn't make it. Unfortunately, it sounds like someone had an accident, and we hope everybody's doing well. That being said, we are going to continue the discussion internally.
Rich, I want to note, I mean, there were people supporting it as well.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
No, I think it was very split.
Yep.
You know, and I... Certainly, I think we heard from a lot of seniors, and I... One thing I did come away from that meeting, I think to them, was 7,000 seniors in town, you know, and they talked...
Maybe even more.
I just, I think it was a number that was thrown out there. I, you know, and they started to talk... But it's...
7,001.
It's a growing population, and people really do want to stay in the town where they grew up and... So let's open it up. I think there's a lot to really start to dig into.
I just want to thank the staff for putting together the materials that we got in preparation for this meeting. I think if we put together, you know, a good summary of the key comments and also areas that we need more information on, areas that the applicant is weak on, and issues that are raised, so that's very helpful stuff. Thank you.
No, we really, and I know we talk about it all the time. Town of Yorktown is really very lucky and blessed to have such dedicated, hardworking professionals that come to work every day and do their thing. And there's a lot, a whole lot of work that goes on behind the scenes that kind of goes unrecognized, you know? Even to, I think, Robin getting grants for buses. It's incredible what they do, and we're all very lucky to have them on our team.
How do we begin?
This is a... This is a lot. Any thoughts on structure-wise? Should we...
Structure-wise?
On how to... Should we just go through the memo?
You guys can dive in any which way you care to. You know, we put in the summary memo first if you wanted to sort of hit some of the higher points. But it's all there for you. I mean, if you've gone through it and there's things that are sticking out in your mind, you can start with them. It's really entirely up to you. I... You know, it was... There was a lot of material, so...
We had that extra discussion. Do you want to talk about that?
If you want to.
I think a week or so after the public informational hearing, some representatives of the applicant met in my office with myself and Rich and John Tegger just to discuss some possibilities after the hearing was concluded. And one of the things they talked about, and again, I can't say whether it's an official comment or not, but one of the things they were looking to do is to figure out a way to fund the entirety of the traffic improvements that they were proposing in return for a tax abatement from the Town of Yorktown for a period of time. Not 10 years, but some lesser number of years. I think it was three or four.
Three years, yeah.
That they were asking for. And I was hoping that they would bring that up for discussion tonight. I don't know if that offer is even on the table at this point, but we did have an informal discussion about it, and I wanted to share it with the public and my colleagues on the board. And so that's one issue, of course. It raises the traffic concerns that did come up repeatedly at the hearing. And they are apparently sensitive to it and not wanting to, you know, hold off on the infrastructure improvements, even though the project would come to fruition because it would have, I guess they recognize it would have an adverse impact, without the full build-out of the traffic improvements. And the other thing I mentioned to them that is of concern to me is the scope of the work that's being done in the stream and the wetland buffer area. And I suggested that they might consider eliminating two of the buildings that are closest to Underhill, just to preserve that space in addition to what they're already talking about preserving. And they didn't commit either way, but they said they would consider it and perhaps come back with an alternative design. I'm not saying that necessarily we would lose or that the project would go down in unit count by those two buildings, but that they might be distributed elsewhere on the site in such a way as to preserve the more sensitive environmental areas, at least that I perceive them to be. And that was basically the gist of the discussion. I don't know if I want to add anything.
Yeah, and I think they were very accepting of the points that you made and with the traffic, and they were going to go back and, I think, digest it. There was one other thing we discussed, which is, I think, one of the bigger hurdles, and it's this POSDEC or NEGDEC.
Yes.
So, you know, this has been bounced around. I know we've kind of molded here and there, but I really want to kind of get a handle on what the trigger points possibly could be for that. You know, we heard from the applicant's professionals, and then we heard from people that disputed some of their claims and numbers, especially on the historic end of it. So, John, Jim, I just think, just so we get it out there, you know, what exactly are those trigger points and what do we do to work with that or, you know, to deal with it? Because I think that's the biggest thing we're going to hear.
Well, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong. It's a significant adverse impact. That's the threshold.
Right.
You guys will be the ones that determine whether it is a significant adverse impact. So taking traffic as an example, the numbers that I recall are, there's the three phases that they talk about. Their first phase, which is very, some minor things, signal timing changes, that essentially, as they're proposing, handles and mitigates their impact of their traffic generation. The second one takes the delay time down from, I think, around 70 seconds to about 15. The third one takes it further, from 15 to 11. You know, if you were to build, for instance, the mitigation phase two, and you improved, and 70 is as it exists now today. So if you're... Even though you would be adding the traffic of the project into it, but you're reducing the delay at that intersection by 80% roughly, I don't know that you could call that a significant adverse impact any longer. So it's those kinds of things. Secondly, I just want to point out, and I'd love to hear Jim's point on it, is usually you're looking at a project and you're not getting as much information as you have already gotten on this project prior to declaring such a, you know, like a POSDEC. You know, usually you're looking at the EAF, you get the scope and breadth of the project, and you're determining that, you know, so many units in this area where there's been no development before, there's all of the typical environmental impacts that have never been imposed on that piece of property, et cetera. It's out in a certain area. You know, those things, you can identify a significant adverse impact fairly quickly, and, you know, applicant might be expecting it because it's such a large project. And those are typically when you see those things, so... You know, I happen to think that in EAFs, and we've talked about expanded EAFs, you can go through and study certain aspects of a project to a depth of knowledge that you acquire from that study and produce the mitigative measures or even have some findings that on its, at first glance, under the regulation, may have the potential to go that way. But once you've studied that through the EAF process, you find that it doesn't rise to a significant adverse impact. So I think that's the job you have with what you have in front of you, whether or not some of those things are getting, or even though you have all those studies, whether they still pose those threats, or at least the one threat that you determine is significant and that you have not been able to acquire enough information to provide, you know, a good set of mitigations for it, so...
I think specifically with the traffic, what we heard from the applicant is they went back to Dr. Greeley and asked him to do a breakdown, and they have a very descriptive memo. I truly believe if the project goes forward, that that concern is going to be absolutely off the table with what they, you know, if they propose and the town decides to work with them and this board, that I think that is going to get removed. I think it, whatever, however bad it is now, it's going to be better when it's done, if this goes forward. You know, and I also think that, you know, the other big question that came up was the historical end of it and New York State. And I, New York State did something a little bit different with this application than they have with others?
I don't know in what regard.
I think you're referring to the letter of resolution?
Yes.
And their standard policy to me seemed to be they wait until the public comment period on the secret was complete, and then they enter into some sort of an agreement or an understanding with the applicant as to what they're going to do with the historical features or the historical impacts on the site. I don't think they changed that because they haven't, they haven't signed off on anything.
No, it just wasn't their normal, I think, protocol.
Yeah, right. Right, I know what you're talking about. Actually, I think, Aaron, that they have stated that, and the applicant's consultant has stated that typically what they've seen is that they do the LOR within the secret process, and you get to a conclusion before, yeah, at the time you're concluding secret or not. In this case, they want, they are waiting to make sure to their feeling that the public has adequate input. You know, I don't know what has given risen or given rise to that sentiment, but that's what they have been saying. So, but the LOR has been drafted, and I think you've had, you have it. My information is that they are still behind that, what is in, contained in that letter of resolution, that it's still valid because it responds to the project that they have seen, which has not changed since they have seen it. If it does change in a significant way, then they will do their due diligence and possibly take another look and modify the LOR, but right now it stands as is.
And the historical end of it, I know that there are professionals went and really dove into the major building, right? The pond in front, the wall structures, some of the root cellars, you know, the entrances, the stone structures in the back. And I think even during our site visit, some of the outbuildings were really not in great condition and had been altered to a point where they might, the historic integrity of it might be diminished. And I know, I was on this board, the conservation board at the time, the property on Stony Street came in when they tore down that historic building, and there was a real backlash and outcry about that building. So I know we're very sensitive to the historical end of it. But from our perspective, you know, I think they've documented they want to restore the main building. They want to really restore the walls, the forward-facing look at the property. Past that, I mean, if they're willing, and it sounds like they were willing to maybe take some of those buildings, take them down, put them back up somewhere else, or use some of the material from them, what is the, what would be the negative impact? Now, I know the site's been talked about, that the site itself is historic. What is... Can we dig into that a little bit?
Yes, we can dig into it. So the state, in their determination, has said that the site is historic, including the contributing buildings and so on and so forth. But, and they've, in their process, demolition of some of those outbuildings and the development on the site is an adverse effect under 1409 of the state historic regulation. So the adverse effect is terminology that they use to describe something under that law, okay? I think it's up to you to determine whether taking those buildings down, again, rises to that level of significant adverse impact and, you know, what the implications are, because you're the lead agency, they are an interested agency, and they will be providing and have provided so far what their sense and advice is. Questions come up when you look at the historic consultant's report, which is the structural integrity of the building, the architectural, of the buildings, the architectural integrity of the buildings, their, how they're dated, et cetera. So for instance, three of the buildings are, I think they claim that they were built either in the 20s or at least one of them in the early 1900s, which is outside of, for instance, the time that the state has said is significant. So that's something, that's a question. If they were built for, to support the Beaver Conference Farm and not the Underhill Farming operation, then it's not really contributing to that historic period. It's, I think it's those kinds of nuances that are existing in this particular situation that are, you know, informative. And, you know, I mean, I think you should probably go through them. You know, for instance, the 1828 building, they claim is a federal-style building, and the 1881 is Italianate, but the federal-style building has no federal-style details left. They've been converted to the Italianate style. So that's not a building that holds its architectural integrity. The only thing that you can tell is federal possibly is its massing, its particular arrangement of windows, but not the windows themselves. The windows themselves now have four lights, for instance, a month in, a month in, right? Just like the main building. Federal-style would have typically six over six, double hung, six lights down below. So it's quite different. The Italianate part of it, and now it's, you know, in detail, all Italianate details, but it's not a, I don't believe it's a high example of Italianate architecture. Italianate usually has low sloped roofs, very low sometimes, and often hipped. It's rare to see a side gable configuration to an Italianate building, and I haven't found too many examples, if at all. If they do have gable roofs with somewhat higher pitched roofs, most often one of the gables faces you. You know, there's, you know, you'd see this when you're facing the main section of the building, not from the side. So there's things that I don't think make it, or at least you can question whether or not it's, that has that high design style and is notable for that particular architectural style. Obviously was done as an addition to a much older building at the time, somewhat like 60 years older, if I'm doing my math correctly, 50. And the architecture was modified to fit together. And so you can't really couch it as a high style. That's another question, I think, so... It's those kinds, and the thing is that, under this proposal, that building is offered to be restored and saved. But nevertheless, in terms of national landmarking, you know, those are the questions that I read through, when I read through the comments and the state's correspondence, that I start to have some questions about. So, and there's others, I think. You know, the site may have had carriage paths. I don't know if the ones that we see now were carriage paths, but they have asphalt paving now. You know, there's some issues to its, the level of eligibility that I think it might have, and in particular, some of the outbuildings. You know, some of them weren't even built at the time that the, for instance, as I said before, that the historic period that's most important was, was there, so...
John, are any of these, are any of those buildings on the property, are they listed on a historic registry or are they under the purview of any entity or body? Were they just the property of the private owner?
They were just the property of the private owner until, the only thing that they have now is that the state, as you see in their correspondence, has deemed them eligible for national and state landmarking. That's all that they have. They're on the eligible list from the state. Now, a couple of things. I don't know what National Park Service would do if it went to get listed. For instance, in the comprehensive plan, we had a historic consultant go through all of our things. Now, the Beaver Conference Farm came up as Beaver Conference Farm, and it was in there, it's recommended for, it's under the state and/or local landmarking, not the national. So that historic consultant didn't classify or believe that this was a national landmark, you know, worthy or eligible building or set of buildings.
John, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can someone delegate something as a historic site without the permission of the owner? Because it looks to me like if you do that, it's a taking, for as I'm concerned.
So it cannot be listed on the national register if it's private property and the owner does not agree to it?
There you go.
John, do you believe that any of these buildings rise to the threshold that the state uses to fall under the registry?
Well, I mean, I...
Besides the conference center itself.
Besides the main building?
Besides the main building.
A couple of the buildings are, still hold some of their, it's hard to say, architecture. You know, it's a barn, and the other's a small building that's like the chapel. They have some historic sense and feel to them, and I think probably are built and old enough to be considered. The rest of them, I think, have been modified... The, the rest of them, I think, have been modified quite, quite a bit. There's a, there's a couple of them that the historic consultant, at least to so far, has not been able to adequately date. The other ones, like I said, three of them, uh, they claim were built after nineteen hundred, two of them probably in the twenties, which kind of makes them built for a different purpose, and so doesn't speak to that integrity of the question about national landmarking, whether or not Isaac and Edward, you know, are worthy of that to begin with, which may, they may be. So I think that the, um, most, most of the buildings there are, it's really a collection of varied styles that happened over many decades. Much of it, I, I happen to think outside of, you know, the, the period that we were looking at, which is, I think, tw- eighteen twenty to eighteen eighty-eight or something is what they marked it as. So, um, to me, there's questions, you know, there's questions to me, in my view.
John, uh, the question I have is, is regarding the two time periods that you referred to for the design. Um, if the applicant is talking about refurbishing the building, to what standard time period is he going to refurbish the building to? Uh, and if this board were to decide, he picked A and we would prefer B, who's going to decide whether it's A or B? And to what standard does that refurbishing? Is it a true historical refurbishment? Or is it making an older building look like an older building? Is it going to have six over six windows, as John referred to, for one time period or, or another? And I don't, I think there's a lot of questions and questions about the design, which I don't think anybody has an answer to. I, I'm assuming the applicant hasn't gotten that far in the level of detail that John's referring to. But if he has, um, who has the authority to say yes or no to that? Does this board really go that far or not? I, I don't know the answer to that myself, so.
I, I do know they stayed, they were gonna, they were gonna be putting a million dollars in the restoration of the building. And then outside, the, again, the forward facing view of the, the building,
Right.
they were gonna restore that, that back to a time period. We even started to get into, at this very early, uh, you know, maybe the landscaping being-
Right.
The question, I think, and obviously you're very sensitive to this, this topic, as you live in a revolutionary era house that have restored it. And we now have, not only John, but more architectural background here. The site itself, how, for mitigation, purposes of mitigation, if a, if a site is deemed historic or of historic integrity, I, I don't know how you would deal with that, if they're willing to redo the whole front end of it. And, but the, the state is saying that site, is it, how do you, how does, how do you grapple with that end of it?
Uh, I think, yeah, I think you have to dig a little deeper until what's, what's leaving and what's staying. Some of it is staying, some of it will be enhanced.
Yep.
So I think, for instance, from the street and what everybody, most people know of the property, you're likely to see much of what you still see.
Are they gonna go back, I'm sorry, are they gonna go back to the rendering that was given or the-
Yeah.
They're using that as their model?
Who is?
Uh, the people that are gonna restore it.
Ye- yes. And the restoration of the building is, there's plenty of questions open, as I think Bob is referring to, uh, you know. So that, that's for another moment, since that building will be restored, I think, and will be retained. But the inter- so for instance, the, the back of the property, which, which you don't see, which has, you know, a driveway that goes down to building E and, and C, that will, that will be gone, but most of the other drives that you actually see will be mostly retained. Again, they're not carriage paths, they're paved driveways now. Uh, the pond will still be there, it will be cleaned up and enhanced, landscaping will be enhanced. Uh, you can try to save as many trees out in the front there that, that's, that you can. Uh, and to the extent that you can see, for instance, in the driveway and see the barn and the chapel, well, that, you won't be able to see that. You may be able to move one or both of those buildings to somewhere else on the site possibly, but you won't see that particular, um, vista. So I think some of the landscaping will be retained. Uh, and it can be enhanced in a manner that is complements its history. And some, some will be lost, some, some will, you know, change. Some, where the buildings are down in the back, where it drops down a little bit in grade, and, and certainly over in the, in the second growth forest area where the wetlands are towards, uh, Glen Rock will be different as well.
Well, I think clearly we saw from the applicants that this was a pasture or a farm. So the tree end of it is not historic. To be historic, you'd have to, it's going there and cut everything down. So, and I don't think anybody's interested in that necessarily, but so if the applicant, just working through some of these major items, if the applicant is taking the approach on the traffic as they are, if they, on the historic end, without getting into the devil in the details, are working towards mitigation on the historic end, and that's still, I think, it sounds like a lot to be worked out. And then Aaron clearly, I, I, I think the applicant heard him when he started to talk about removing the two buildings. He actually kind of sounded in favor of it, and I don't want to speak for him, but, you know, talking about maybe adding apartments or other things, so-
They didn't reject it out of hand.
Right. You know, and if that end is kind of moved away and we're, we're pulling away from some of the wetlands issue, which is a big factor, you really start to pull away, I think, some of the major issues that we might have. Outside, you know, I know there's the, the whole issue with the, uh, public infrastructure, the sewer, the water end, which I think we need to know more about, and I don't think we're there yet. But if we start to really tackle some of these bigger issues, do we then get away from a POSDEC? And Jim, I know you have, uh, some background knowledge.
Yeah, um, let me just address the historic site discussion you were just having. I was involved in a project where the landscaping on a site was designed by Frederick Law Olmsted, who was the designer of Central Parks landscaping. And for that reason alone, it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Now, a lot of changes have been made to the site since that time. You just have to keep, what we had to do is each time we had to say, alright, we're honoring the integrity of the design without, how can I say, I, I use the term malicious compliance. We're not, um, we're not slavishly stuck to where everything was planted and what was planted. But the overall design, we were committed to keeping, and that was enough for, uh, Shippo to, uh, sign off on the project ultimately. The, I had some thoughts on the POSDEC issue, and this is, this is the way I looked at it. When I sat through the hearing, I was literally overwhelmed with the uh, variety of issues raised at the public hearing. It's really, in most respects, more than I've ever seen raised at a public hearing before, other than for something major. I happened to be down in Brooklyn for a meeting and got stuck behind the Atlantic Yards presentation. And that was another matter completely, because that involved everything. But as for here in Westchester County, the sheer number of issues that were raised by residents uh, was really almost overwhelming. Uh, I went through the minutes and the written submissions and came up with twenty-seven issues that were raised. And other than traffic, I didn't consider any of those issues major, but they were issues that have to be studied and have to be studied carefully. And of those twenty-seven issues, some were in conflict. We had a couple of pe- people speak about how we need senior housing. And we had a couple of people speak about how we need starter homes. That's one thing. There were other people who spoke about, um, the preservation of trees, particularly uh, that one stretch. And, um, other people said, well, if you, if you took that attitude, none of your homes would have been built. We had other people say, the park is a great idea. And there were other people say, we don't need another park. Uh, we had differing views on whether the proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, we had questions about the demand for community resources. I'm just cherry picking here. Um, the timing of funding for road improvements, um, job creation, diversity of housing stock. Some people like apartments, some people don't. I spent a lot of my life in apartments, and apartment living to me, I've also lived in houses, it's different. It's not any worse, it's not any better, it's just different, okay? That's my view. Compliance with the goals of the overlay district. Um, walkability, that was one issue that really surprised me. Everybody talks about how you should design things to be walkable. And other people are like, are you kidding me? This is Yorktown, nobody walks around here. And nobody walks two things. And the, the idea of walking to a grocery store sounds great. You know, when I lived in the Bronx in the nineteen fifties, and we had the little carts that you pull, but I wouldn't want to be walking along Sawmill River Road with one of those carts right now with a, a lot of groceries. So my point was that it wasn't like the Atlantic Yards or, um, Ridge Hill and Yonkers that had a huge number of, not a huge number, but relatively few, but major issues. These are, are relatively small issues. And the question is whether or not it's best to study them in the EIS format or not. I can tell you this, and the, the, I thought the staff did a great job of putting together an analysis of those comments and, and potential responses. But if you are gonna issue a POSDEC, we have to be very specific about what we want the applicant to study. This is not going to be like Ridge Hill, where we're concerned, where they were concerned about blasting. You're putting a, a mall into the side of a hill, or, um, you know, the, the visual impact is completely different off Interstate eighty-seven than it is uh, here on Underhill. But you would have, you would have to be very specific in terms of what you want the applicant to study. If you're reluctant to issue a POSDEC because there aren't any issues that are significant, you're not really in a position to issue a NEGDEC either. You clearly don't have enough information. The tra- the applicant's traffic study is just that. It's an applicant's traffic study, it's from a respected traffic consultant, but it's an applicant's traffic study. And I was thinking of, today of a hearing I had a couple of years ago before the pandemic, where we had two engineers, one saying, this is gonna be traffic Armageddon. You're gonna be dead, deadlock, stopped all the time, nobody's gonna be able to get through the intersection. And the other engineer said, well, with a few improvements, everything can work just fine, and everybody, nobody will be stuck in traffic, and everybody can go home. And the problem is there's no accountability for being wrong in this situation. This project is built now, traffic works just fine. If I ran into the applicant's engineer, he'd say, whoa, what do you expect? That's what they paid me to say, you know, he, he doesn't take ownership of it. So we have to expect that the traffic study has to be professionally reviewed and really almost peer reviewed, because it's a major site in town at probably the, if not the busiest, one of the busiest intersections in all of town. So the question is, might it be best to do an EIS, issue a POSDEC, do an EIS, study all the issues together? Cause I said, some of them are conflicting. You can't have both senior and starter homes on the same site. There are other people that talked about affordable, and that's something that maybe should be considered, but this may not be the site for that. That's what a POSDEC would do for you, to say, okay, we'll give you these seven or eight issues to study, study the hell out of them, report back to us, and we'll proceed from there. Or we can do a more incremental approach and say, look, um, you know, we think the historic, for instance, can be studied separate and apart from an EIS. I think that the housing component, the mix with affordable senior, starter homes, probably best done in an EIS than in a, in a series of studies.
How about alternative, consideration of alternative layouts, you know, within the parameters of the overlay district? We have a lot of room, vary what goes into this site, but we're only being presented with one option right now.
Well, that's one of the advantages of a POSDEC and an EIS, is that you're required by law to study alternatives. And there may be alternatives worth studying, even John gave some good examples on the historic end. There may be some value to preserving some buildings and changing the design of the site. There may be some value to giving the applicant tax abatements to encourage certain things to be done. You know, for them to front load the traffic improvements. I know I was very skeptical at first about the traffic improvements, because I thought, I've worked with too many governments where they kick the can down the road, the improvements never got done, and then when they needed them, the applicant was long gone and can't be called upon to contribute anymore.
That never happens.
So if you want this done, a vehicle to get it funded upfront is the best solution.
And they've presented that solution.
In formally.
Yeah.
They didn't come out of one of us here and do it. Did that come before the town board at all?
It's been, it's, they have mentioned it, it's not like a new concept. I think, uh, many people have heard about it, not just the town board. Um, but I will tell you that this intersection is a disaster. I, I got into a car accident there a few years ago. It's just, it's just not right, you don't know, when you're turning left, you end up in the middle of the intersection. It, it's a dangerous place. I mean, if, if we could, if part of what comes out of this project is the reworking of this intersection, it's, it's a huge bonus for the town. And, you know, it's, and, and I know that we're, we're talking about the historic part about it and all of that, but let's not, let's not forget or leave behind the, um, the, 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 the positive impact it will have on, on the local economy as well for Yorktown. I mean, that's very important, will have a positive impact on the business community. And, and honestly, I think it does have a lot of the, um, a lot of the features that people were conflicted about. Um, it may not be a starter home, but it could be a starter apartment. Um, and, and so I think, I think that's baked in there somewhere.
I, I agree, I think the, the town has opened up the box. We're given a blueprint now for developers to come in and with this overlay district and do different types of work, right? So the town is invited, this upon us. We also understand, especially in the economy we're headed into, that not necessarily is the funding available, clearly not from the state, to do this type of work. And I, I agree with the councilman that the, the intersection's horrible. If we, if this did go forward and that work did get done, funded by the developer, offset by the town, and I, we've been talking about this holistically, I think it opens up, opens up the door for other things. I mean, you look at, um, Trader Joe's now, where they said they're gonna create a hundred local jobs. Right? And, you know, I'm sure it's gonna be crazy in the beginning, just like Popeyes was.
There's nobody there.
But it'll calm down. But I, I just think this opens up the door, and I know my biggest concern when this first came to us was the traffic. I think as we dig into it, not even on the, the historic end, and I know, again, this is your, your, your wheelhouse, I think what at least they've shown so far works towards mitigation, especially the restoration of an existing house, the ice pond, and some of the, the structures that might have been relative to when the farm was originally-
That's mitigation.
Active, right? And I would, especially with the, you know, as Jim said with that project he was on, if the landscaping and that view shed is more towards that original- if the landscaping and that view shed is more towards that original, I think rendering we got, I think those are two of the bigger issues. The environmental end, I think there, you know, again, we have to wait to hear from the applicant, but there might be some movement there where there are alternatives shown.
Well, you think that, I mean, isn't the threshold question now what level of review we're going to do, basically? I mean, we have many years of experience in bringing it through the EAF, you know, the environmental assessment form process where we pick an issue. We discussed it, the output comes back with some other thing. You know, we massage these things and we go through various changes of this. If that's sufficient for this project, then we can certainly continue that. Whereas there are advantages to doing the other one that may benefit the review of this project as well.
Dive more into it.
Particularly thinking about the conflicting things that we have and also the alternative analysis that we could do. Maybe if a traffic issue, if one issue is well presented and mitigation is out there, does that still have to be studied, a duplicate study has to be done if we go through them to a POSDEC? Or can you say, no, we, this analysis is sufficient, we can move on. But there's other issues which we need more work on, and we can limit a POSDEC that way?
Yes.
Don't the town have a traffic consultant that?
Traffic and environmental.
Okay, so.
They're going to be looking at it.
All right, so right there, you're going to have either conflict or you're going to have agreement. So I think the traffic should be held up until we get both reports. Because I don't know what I'm talking about, because I only got one side.
Right.
So I gotta have another guy tell me, no, I don't need a traffic light there.
Yeah. Let's just remember that you can continue to study to whatever level you feel adequate and go on until, and put it this way, you can study each individual aspect to whatever depth that you feel is necessary, and that still does not preclude you from issuing a POSDEC at a later date. So you can ask for alternatives, if you can describe what the alternative should be. You don't need necessarily to go through a process that's prescribed in the secret law in order to ask for them. You have, you know.
We could ask now for an alternative layout.
Of course. You can ask.
Without going to a POSDEC.
You can ask for, you have a historic, you know, alternatives analysis, but you can ask for more in that regard.
But an alternate, alternate plan to what end? To lessen the density or to decrease the traffic? I mean, that's.
That would reduce the impacts, the overall impacts of some of this.
But you have a developer that's presented a plan that is commercially viable. So what we might be doing is simply talking them out of, making the investment that they're contemplating, right? Because it just doesn't make investment sense.
I gotta tell you, Rob, when Aaron, you know, started speaking about moving, removing the two buildings, he really, you know, he was.
I didn't say remove them.
Right.
Move.
Right, move them or, you know.
Eliminate them and distribute.
Right, into other areas.
Right.
And again, they're not here to speak to it, but my impression was that they weren't, you know, that was something that they were going to look at. So I don't, I don't think that, and again, the, what we had was a public informational hearing, which is unique to Yorktown, which I think is in a lot of ways very smart. Because I think we heard and we treated it more like a public hearing. So that, at this point, I don't think, and a lot of people did a lot of homework. You know, we had people doing comedy acts, too. We had a song presentation. And then you had John Flynn, who went and looked at all these studies and really. So I think we, we've seen and heard as much as we're going to see and hear in that public informational as we will in the public hearing. So I think the path forward is kind of laid. The questions are out there. It's we gotta start to really dig into the, dive into the weeds here on some of these things. And as Aaron had said, if we start to pull away some of these concerns and we really have areas where we don't want to target, do we push, not push the others to side, but have internal consultants look at them?
That's what we do, you know, when we go through various applications. We focus on different areas at different meetings and we work to resolve those issues and we move to other ones, and eventually a whole package comes together.
So what are our, right now, looking at, from what we've heard and seen, what are our big question marks here? I mean, I think we've talked about the traffic, we've talked about the historic end, we've talked about the environmental end. I know one thing that I heard that concerned me was the impact on the sewer infrastructure and the water infrastructure, not so much the water, but more the sewer.
Well, there was a memo from DEP and DEC, and they both raised similar concerns that have not yet been addressed because the plans are not at that stage.
Right. So I think that's something we really need to be concerned about.
Well, you can't issue a NEGDEC based on what you have now. So the, one comment I did want to make, if you were to focus on some issues and try to run them down and later decide you don't really have enough information to make a decision and you issue a positive declaration at that time, you've wasted a lot of the applicant's time. And my suggestion is if, if you do feel that's a possibility, then my recommendation would be to issue one sooner rather than later. Have the staff and John, Robin, myself, and the applicant and their attorney sit down and define a scope on a timeline to get things done.
Good idea.
To try to move things along, give every issue enough time to study it in the kind of detail that your residents are expecting, while at the same time being cognizant of the applicant's time and cost.
At what point can we issue that?
You could issue a positive declaration anytime. You could issue it now. You couldn't issue a negative declaration because there are too many issues yet to be resolved.
So do you think it would be?
Which you don't do until you're ready at the, usually the end of the process, is your practice.
Is it advantageous to all of us, the applicant and the board, to do it as soon as possible?
I think so.
I think we should, absolutely. This way we get a handle on it and we know what we're doing.
And we have an orderly planned out.
Otherwise, we're going to be.
Does issuing a POSDEC in any, because it gets scoped, does it any way restrict what we look at in detail going forward? We can still expand our review.
You can still expand if you, if what you start with raises other issues.
Once you accept the scope, I don't know that you can just bring up new things that easily.
That's why I'm asking.
I don't think that's.
Well, the scope is just an identification of the issues.
Yeah. To the exclusion of others or?
Once you accept the scope and you set them off on writing an EIS, which is a document usually of this size, which takes many months and many professionals to write because you are writing in prose about all of those issues, it's difficult to add things in. Yes, it is. I'm not saying it can't be done, but you, you know, what you're doing is you're elongating a process that is already a lengthy and expensive process.
Okay, so I just don't want to pre, I don't want to preclude.
John, can.
Expanding the conversation.
And somebody for my benefit and maybe perhaps some of the public, what is the benefit of the positive deck, positive declaration?
You asking me?
Or anybody that wants to answer that question.
So the benefit, I think what the original intent of EISs is to uncover, you know, all of the pertinent facts and reach, be able to have enough facts to reach, you know, sound conclusions. You know, this is what you do as a normal course in any application.
Right. That's, I'm saying, it sounds like something was created by a consultant.
Yes.
Because it sounds like there's going to be a lot of work. It's got to get done anyhow.
Full Employment Act.
And as I, as I.
Was originally known as.
As I said before, typically, and in a way historically, what you would see is you'd see the EAF and the application and the, and the plans come in. And soon thereafter, without much other ado and study, you would either elect to do a POSDEC or not. This is a little bit different case, which is not unusual any longer in that you have an applicant that understands and has heard a lot of commentary in the last couple of years since they've owned the property and have already produced studies of the pertinent things that appear to be looming the largest. They will also be producing a stormwater SWIP and report, which, you know, whether you drop that into an EIS or not, is still going to yield the same facts. So I think that is a pertinent consideration here, given what the overlay district is intended to do, what it has in there, and the things that it cites and asks of an applicant, and how it sets forth a process in which the town and the applicant are working towards the goals that are cited in that, so.
So if, they've already done these studies.
Yes.
And we've seen them and we reviewed them. Are we going to get anything different?
My feeling is we can produce the same information through our own activities and diligence than that a formal POSDEC will produce without all the paper.
That's typically what.
That's what we do, I would think, yeah.
Well, there is one, one rather significant advantage to a POSDEC, and that is doing an EIS is the best tool for risk management. In other words, you don't go all the way through the process, approve a project, and have a judge decide, well, you really should have done an EIS. The citizens raised, you know, all these issues and you studied them, but you really should have done an EIS. And now an applicant's two and a half years down the road and has to start over and do an EIS.
Right, if an EIS in fact yields other information.
What was the last, what was the?
You could just take those studies and put them in there.
What was the last project that we did a POSDEC on?
Whoa, boy. Probably the project below the reservoir that was called, it was the Muldoon property, which was 72 senior units. That was an EIS.
I got, um.
Okay, which one? No, that was an EIS.
Did you pause that Costco?
That was an EIS.
No, I don't think so.
But for instance, that was, I'm pretty sure that was an EIS.
Costco we didn't, right?
Costco was an EIS as well.
Was.
But there was a positive declaration made on that, okay.
And for instance, um.
I'm sure.
The Field Home. Field Home was an expanded EAF. And that had independent living units, assisted living, continuum of care. That was a big project. And that was done as an expanded EAF. The Crumpun Crossing, you know, the Crumpun Triangle, that was an expanded EAF that supported that rezoning.
If we take the process from the POSDEC and not do that and say, look, here's a memo from the planning board. These are the issues we want to focus on. These are the weaknesses that we see we need more information on. Kind of working along similar lines, a little more formally than we have been in some of these cases, but without going to the full blown EIS to help focus the discussion on their end and on ours. I mean, a lot of the notes that you guys put in there, you got staff and, you know, does that.
Yeah.
Come on, John, let me ask you, what do you recommend?
You can do that.
What do you recommend? Guide me.
I recommend uncovering all of the pertinent facts to the appropriate level so that you have a good supporting documentation to make your decision. So I'm not, I can't tell you that, whether that's, has to be the EIS or not. I certainly, there are certainly examples in which you've had targeted studies or an expanded EAF, which was uncovered enough information for you to understand fully what the, what the aspects of the project were, even with public input, as you also have here. And there's also been projects that were pushed to an EIS because the breadth of all of the impacts were just more varied and larger. They weren't, they were less targeted. So for instance, the Field Home, there was already a campus there with, you know, nursing homes, so on and so forth. So that was done as an expanded EAF because it was felt that there's already known quantity, there's already development there, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas the Muldoon property was completely vacant in an area of large lot, single family residence zoning. They were proposing multifamily, 72 units. It was such that it was near the reservoir. There was the potential to see the project from points across the reservoir that, for instance, the Turkey Mountain, the farm, the county farm, Hiltup Hanover, all of those. There was many issues to work through. The board felt that it's going to be very difficult to work through them, kind of in an unfolding process possibly, and get the applicant to answer all of those fully. So they POSDECed it. You know, this, this project, as Jim said, it's, you know, 13 acres. It has development on it. It's in a developed area. It's supported in many ways in the comprehensive plan. It has been historically through the last number of decades, and Bob may remember, was put forth for multifamily housing on it at various times. Stormwater is not something that is anticipated to be a difficulty as yet. It still needs to be worked through. I think the environmental consultant so far has shown that the wetlands are created from runoff to a large degree. They are impounded by the emergency roads. So they are low functioning, you know, created wetlands. That is not completed yet, but that's kind of where it's heading. So in this case, I think you have some, some items there to consider that maybe you don't need to look at everything that you usually see in an EIS. You know, what's the impact on habitat, you know, so on and so forth. Where, you can ask for that anyway. So I think that's where, where it stands.
I think we're, and again, I think we're early in the game with this. I know the applicant has done a lot of work because it's been in the, I think at the town board level. It's certainly been vetted out in the paper. But I think we have concerns that we have to work through. I think there are significant questions we need answered. I just don't know if we're at the point where we want to make that decision yet without hearing from, I think, the applicant. I think there are clearly, again, the sewer, which has been brought up by different agencies, is a question. It sounds like the environmental end is being looked at, the traffic end's being looked at, the historical end is going to be fact checked.
I don't know. We got, myself, I'd like to make, see it move along faster so we can get this under our belt.
Well, again, if you, if you listen to what the professionals are saying, the POSDEC is a large document. It takes a lot of hours to produce. It's costly. Where we might be able to, by digging into the details here, get the same result.
So you think that would be advantageous?
Well, I think that's what John's saying, is if we did an expanded version of.
I would, I would be for that. I want to see the applicant move forward.
So I think, again, I just, as one member of the board, I think we're, we're, we got a real historical question. Which I think is being looked at seriously. We have a real serious.
Traffic issue, which Sergio could attest to.
We have wetlands issues which are getting addressed. Now we have, you know, this infrastructure, stormwater, and I think Dan, if he was still here, would be able to tell you. I don't think, there's not, you can't engineer with money. If you got money, you can engineer in progress. So, but the sewer end and the use, the difference, you know, is it, is it housing? Is it apartments? You know, I think those questions we got to really start to look at closer now.
Well, you won't know about sewer water before you know what the count is going to be.
Well, again, this is what, you know, we got to work through.
So we have to cut before the horse.
The count would be what the applicant's proposing.
So if we say all of a sudden, you know what, POSDEC it, you got to look at it. And we run that way, or we say, listen, this is what we're concerned about. You need to get us answers, or we can't move forward, you're going to, I think you're going to get.
You'll see action.
Right.
I think based upon the rate, the state of the record for me right now, there's a lot of information that's missing.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that still need to be developed so that we can make proper decisions on this. I'm just trying to figure out the best way of doing it because I don't want to come away and say, you know. One of the things I want us to do is to take charge of the review process on this project, more so than just waiting for the applicant to come forward and fill in.
I would like to suggest that we make our own scoping.
Yeah.
Document, without, without it being a scoping document, just our working list of our priorities that we want to review, that we're not limiting ourselves to expanding or reducing.
That we're not limiting ourselves to expanding or reducing based on the process. Because if we do a formal pos deck, then we're gonna have to do a scoping document that's gonna be restrictive. And this way, we do it on our own, we have, we give ourselves the flexibility to move quickly or, or slow down and reuse something in greater detail.
And I think that's to the benefit of the applicant, cuz it's incumbent on, what's missing, we need to tell them or ask, you know, tell them what we think is missing. Because I, I actually think there's a lot here already, right? And so, there are th- questions to be answered, very specific ones. And with all due respect, Jim, I think your twenty-seven issues, I think some of them are opinions. And that there are maybe six or eight real issues that will impact the community. The, the surrounding neighborhood and everything else that we really have to look at deeply. And I think that idea, almost creating our own, here's the list.
I like that.
But we've gotta tell them what's missing, we can't just say it's missing and then go away and give us something, cuz nothing will happen, but time will pass.
What's your thoughts, John?
Again, again, I think you need to drill into the things that are pertinent. And if you do it that way and you get the correct answers that are supportable, you're doing the right thing. And so, you can choose your path on it. Um, but again, it's a, it's about uncovering the proper amount and type of information to support your decision, whatever that may be.
No, I think as far as the housing is concerned, cuz that's probably the easiest, that's an issue the applicant hasn't addressed yet. I think there's one thing to ask the applicant to study, the town's needs, housing wise. It's another thing completely to expect the applicant to solve all the town's problems.
Right.
So, you know, the, the applicant.
The new town hall.
They do have the right to propose what they want. And it's really a question ultimately of the board to say, is this the right project for this site? And if it doesn't meet all of the issues raised by the public, then that's the way it is. But it pro- that's an issue that probably should be studied. And it's probably gonna take some time for the applicant to adequately study what the town's housing needs are. And how this project fits into it.
That would be a great question to ask, is how did you come up with it? Because this is one of the few projects that we've seen that is a real mixed use. Apartments, townhomes, you know, maybe even a hotel or whatever, but, so it would be interesting, cuz they're not gonna build anything that's gonna stay empty. So if there's no rental market in Yorktown, they're not gonna build rental apartments, they'll build condominiums or townhomes. So, it would be interesting to ask them, how did you come up with this mix? Um, and, you know, cuz it does also contribute to the density on the site to some degree. So that's an, an interesting perspective to, to look at.
I think that, right now, that's one of the biggest questions, right? Again, the, the other three issues we're kinda working through, right, we have our consultants working through. But the housing end of it, I, I, you know, and some of the math behind it that John Flynn brought up. You know, I.
May- maybe even the retail, how did they decide on what kinda retail is gonna be brought into it?
I mean, clearly, the, the developer does this for a living.
Yeah.
Right? So they're not gonna do something, so they're not.
Retail would be neighborhood, cleaners, addresses.
Nail salons, pizza.
Right, no, I agree. Well, it's like the use of the park.
Yeah.
You know, do, is, is, how does that work? You know, if it's a private park, and I know, we've had this come up once before, and you were very, very, um. I always say this without getting myself in trouble, you were, you had a very strong opinion about the beach up in, uh.
You're not gonna get in trouble with me.
No, but I know you were, you really wanted to keep that, so the town had access to it.
To the.
To the beach up at, uh.
Oh, yes, of course.
Right?
Yeah.
So, and, yeah, I.
For, for many reasons, a lot of reasons.
But I, I still to that day remember the, the passion you had talking about that. Is this ice pond the same?
Well, I think, in, in a way it is, because the ice pond is also, has historic attributes to it, right? It, it does inform the landscape, in particular, what most people know and understand of that property is the ice pound and the main house. Because really, m- m- most of the other buildings, you really can't see from the, from the street. So yes, I think it's important in that regard. I also think, you know, into the question of it being a park and do we need another park. All of projects that you look at, you do look at them in terms of what is the balance of open space to developed area. You don't pack everything in, so this is really also part of the open space. If there is not public access to it, I still think it's necessary to have that for its view shed from the site. How it informs the architectural, the historic and architectural feeling of the site. And for the people that will be living there in terms of having some open space to it. So i- it's important just on those basic levels. Not even speaking to whether or not we need a park. To have the public to be able to come to it, to experience it. Is something that, when you speak about the importance of that property to the psyche of Yorktown. Now, for the first time, anybody that wishes to will be able to go there, walk around the pond, experience it. Also, go into the interior of the building, experience that from the inside. And get a full experience rather than a drive-by experience, and I think that's incredibly important to the project. I think it's things that you look at normally, not just this project. You look at open space and the balance of development on a piece of property all the time.
So, and again, I think John's passion and what he just said kinda speaks volumes. And I, there was a, a woman who spoke, and she said, you know, she was very much in favor of the park being open. She says, if I live there, I could walk next door to a, a senior center, recreate. And if I want, I can go out and, and watch, you know, the kids play, or, very moving to, to, you know, to hear that end of it. So, again, John, I, I, as always, we appreciate.
So I believe, uh, I believe the park, the park portion of it is, is, is supposed to be some kind of a public-private.
Yes.
Partnership.
Yeah.
Um, where, you know, the, the town will have and town residents will have full access to it at any time. Um, the, I know people brought up, uh, the concern of, you know, we don't need more pocket parks. This would be different because I believe in their proposal, they are, they are going to be responsible for.
Yeah, and they, clearly they said that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so it's kinda different.
It just, uh, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's the ability, I think similar to when they did the, uh. Oh my god, I forget the, uh, companies probably changed names ten different times, across from A and S. Where they had the parking and there's access to the waterfront there. Similar to that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or even the glass shop down here, having parking that is. I, I think that's important, and what I think is really important is the town doesn't have to pay for it. So.
So where do we go?
I think, I agree that we come up with some kinda scope. We outline, you know, some of the, the more serious trigger points. Um, I think again, if, if you poke John the right way, you get a reaction that kinda steers you to where he's going. And what, what he thinks is, is best for the town.
Let me know, throw him an elbow in your.
Huh?
You know, when they prepared the common summary and, and those things, that's the genesis to me of what we, what we're looking for in terms of this. Pseudoscoping document, I guess.
So I, I think John and Robin know better than anybody the, the trigger points. So at this point, maybe it's a good idea to ask them to come up with the outline.
You've got twenty-seven possible candidates to put on the list to start with.
With one hundred issues, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But we can check them off, or, or delete them, or add to them, or.
Yeah, right. I just, if we come up with, I, John said this and Jim agreed, if we come up with the scope and we lock into that. That's what we're locked into, where if we're working.
This way, we're not.
We're not. And if we work something and all of a sudden it's.
Well, this isn't an issue.
I understand, I know.
Push it to the side and you.
We do the same thing at our speed.
Something else might come up and you hit.
You don't know.
Right.
I mean, again. I, I agree a hundred percent with you.
The only thing we all wanna do is hold the public caring too soon.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Sixty-two days.
Makes sense. We're on an agreement.
I think so.
Yeah.
Right?
So, we'll wait for the next memo.
We'll work.
Once you get the memo.
John got his homework.
Right, so, so we'll do an outline. We'll definitely start with the twenty-seven and other things in here. And I think that we'll, just for s- the discussion purposes, touch on things that. Maybe need some discussion, just so you're very clear on what things to include and what not to.
Just as far as the twenty-seven is concerned, those were issues raised, they're not necessarily significant.
They were what?
Yeah.
That's right.
It was what the.
I think it's a great list, and I think they're all significant, I mean, it's what the public wa- you know, want, was concerned about. So, I mean, you know, eh, eh, they may not all be equally as significant, you know, and they might be weighted or something. You know, but I think, you know, the fact that you compile that and this board is, is, is privy to it and concerned about it. Is exactly what we all should be doing in public service.
That's what we do.
Yep.
And I think the, you could see from, and you don't ever wanna, and that's why I really. Maybe sometimes it's exhausting, but I think you really hear and get, feel, you know, some people were joking around and maybe not. But I think the people like John Flynn, right, and some of the others, they really went and did some homework. And you can't just blow that off, you have to take this seriously.
Every person was cool.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, was, was serious, was sincere.
And everybody was very respectful of everybody else, there was no nonsense.
It was good.
Yeah, I mean, we almost had to throw Susan out once, but that's every me.
A lot of them were redundant.
Yeah, well.
And, and a lot of them were scripted.
Yes, but it was.
Written by a ghostwriter.
But some of them were, you know, again, they all had different spins on things. But I think it was important to do that, cuz I think it's really outlined. And you guys correct me if I'm wrong, the, the process we need to follow. And clearly, Jim, John, and everybody here through the minutes have gotten a real handle on some of the issues. So let's work, if we, John, Robin, if you guys could work on that outline, obviously, we could circulate it.
I, I think we're gonna be influenced by the facts and not by opinion.
No, well, I, I think that's what we've always done.
I know that, but I'm just saying, they, they can have a hundred, uh, o- oppositions and four. The facts are the facts, and that's what we're gonna, gonna.
That's what we have to do, sure.
Yeah.
And I think we, we should do that, do the.
Makes sense to everybody?
Okay.
Good.
Jim, John? All right.
Motion, of course?
Not until we talk about crumble cookie. When I was on vacation, I got it from my daughters. How come we don't have a crumble cookie in town? John, can you work on that?
That's my next.
Congrats to your daughter.
Oh, thank you very much.
She's, uh, unbelievable.
Yeah, she.
I'm very proud.
I am, she is very good to you. All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.